Call to order the common council meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025. Roll call, please. And it looks like the gentleman from the 17th is excused. Before we do the pledge, I want to wish a very happy birthday to our good friend and colleague, the gentleman from the 2nd. Happy birthday, Alderman Seal. Now, I'd like everyone to please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Approval of the minutes of the meeting held March 17th, 2025? Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call up the gentleman from the 15th.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, guests, tonight, I would like to introduce John George Miller, who was named as the 2025 hometown hero for the first quarter. Mr. Miller, if you'd come up, if your wife, come up and join us. The Kenosha Hometown Heroes Commission was created in December of 2015 to identify and recognize as hometown heroes worthy men and women who served or are currently serving in the United States Armed Forces for their outstanding personal achievements and the positive contributions they have made to Kenosha. Those honored must be born in, currently reside in, or have previously resided for 10 years or more in the city of Kenosha. To date, we have identified 35 hometown heroes. Mr. Miller served in the United States Navy and the Naval Reserve. He started in 1965. He was a 1960 graduate of Bradford High School. He was assigned to the USS Djenko, an APS 123, as a fire control technician. This was from 67 to 68. He was right off Vietnam, and he worked with UDTs. He had a background in engineering, and he used that background to work on the weapons that the underwater demolition team used during Vietnam, and also some of the SEALs, the Navy SEALs, that were also incorporated heavily in Vietnam. He was there on his ship. He worked on the gear, and I think every now and then, he may have even gotten a ride into the country. All right? When he came back, he was there from 67 to 78, and then he came back and was assigned to the Naval Reserve Center in Racine. And you may think, wow, that's, that's pretty, pretty easy going. Well, he used his engineering background and skills to develop different weapon machinery and guidance systems, and this is in the Reserve Center in Racine. And so I think that the Navy and the Naval Reserve really identified early on the toolkit that this gentleman brought to, to the Navy. He received the following awards: National Defense Service Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal with Silver Star, Navy Unit Commendation Ribbon, Meritorious Unit Commendation Ribbon, Navy E Combat Action Ribbon, Vietnam Campaign Medal Device, Republic of Vietnam Meritorious Unit Commendation with Gallantry Cross with Palm and Frame, Amphibious Force Insignias, the Naval Reserve Meritorious Service Medal with Bronze Star, the Armed Forces Reserve Medal. His military education again started as a fire control radar technician. He used that to build on it to be a huge positive asset to the Navy. He's served as a member back here in Kenosha, the following groups: the Navy Club of Kenosha, Ship 40, served in the Office of Paymaster from 2010 to 2025, chairperson of club fundraisers, and serves as a sound technician for all Navy programs in the community: Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Pearl Harbor Memorial Service that are sponsored by the Navy Club. In addition, he serves as co-chair of the Navy Club Christmas Gift Baskets, and serves as a poll chief during elections in Kenosha. Participates with other club members in Kenosha in summer's 4th of July parades. So it's distinct honor to introduce Mr. George, Mr. John George Miller, as a Kenosha hometown hero for Q1 2025.
I have accomplished a few things, but I really owe what I've accomplished to a lot of people that were behind me and helped me out. And by the way, my wife was the chairman on that Christmas gift thing. But we had a lot of people for fundraisers that were in the Navy Club that helped, helped out a lot, and I couldn't have done any of that without them. And appreciate all of that. And having been in the Navy, that was something that really started me on a career here in town. I worked for Eaton Corporation as an electronic technician, and later on as an electronic engineer. So wouldn't have done it without the Navy. So, like I said, there are a lot of people behind me that made it possible. So, and I see some of them out here right now. So, appreciate it.
Just real quick, hang tight here. Just wanted to say a couple of words, and then we're gonna pause for some pictures. On behalf of the city of Kenosha, I just wanted to say thank you. We, we don't too often get a chance to recognize who our true heroes are in this community, because a lot of times you fly under the radar. You're out there helping at different events. You're the voice every Memorial Day and Veterans Day. I've been at all those events, and it wouldn't be the same without you. But you help out in so many different ways in this community, that that's why this program is so important, because I think it's incredibly special to highlight folks like yourselves who served this community for many, many years, and continue to serve sometimes behind the scenes quietly, but this community wouldn't, wouldn't be able to thrive without you. So on behalf of the city of Kenosha, we're proud to know you, we're proud to have you, and proud to call you one of our hometown heroes. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Now, I would like to ask for a five-minute recess for pictures. All those in favor say aye. Five minutes having lots, we are back in session. Please continue.
Citizen comments. Molly Gray Moore.
Hi, my name is Molly Gray Moore, 639 14th Avenue. I want to start off by saying kudos to Alderman Holly, Alderman Dunn, Alderman Keith, and Alderman Art, because I firmly believe we vote for you all, so you need to be a voice for us. I know you have a city at your best heart, but we vote for y'all, so y'all need to be a voice for us. No shade, Mr. Mayor. So we need y'all to learn how to speak up for us when you all have these decisions to make, because at the end of the day, it's us as citizens that go out and vote for you, not the city, the citizen. Number two, I want to say kudos to Alderman Bill, Merritt Dave, DC Joe, Chief Dan, Chief Pat, and also to Jody, who's in public work. So a couple of weeks ago, Rutha High School sponsored their second annual event, which this year it was dodgeball. So our mayor came out and played with our waste division, so it was our first responders. So this is something that I'm working with Rutha High School with. These school students have always been wanting to be a part of the city, but nobody ever accepted them, and nobody ever recognized them. So what they're doing at Rutha School, which is one of the schools that they tried to close, these kids are being a part of our community in the way that they know how. And playing these special events is what they do. So Merritt Dave, that meant a lot, so thank you. That meant a lot to them to see the mayor come out and play with them and against them. Oh, yeah, we ain't gonna talk about that, Mr. Mayor. So number three, what I actually really want to talk about. So I work really hard in my community. I know I'm not an elected mayor. I know I'm not the elected Alderman, but my district is District 312, and I need each and every one, each one of y'all to understand that our police, our fire department, and our department of work have been working really hard with me with trying to keep the lots clean. So the city has several lots in my neighborhood that people are dumping on. And what I mean by that, today I went down 62nd on the lot that Tim Casey, and kudos to Tim Casey. Tim Casey just had this lot cleaned off, and I have tires over there. So I'm here to tell everybody, when you're going through my community, or my neighborhood, I have no problem with you calling in stuff, because I hear that some Aldermen don't want to call stuff in. They feel like it's not their district. But I want to share that love, because I've worked really hard in Uptown Community Square to get it to the place where it's at now. So if you see something, say something. It's not going to be cleaned up if we don't all recognize that it needs to be done. So once again, kudos to Captain James, DC JW, Detective of Chad from Fire. They work with me with the day drinkers. I'm having a problem, again, with the day drinkers. So now the day drinkers want to hang out in the alley. So Aldermen, Alderwomen, you need to be on top of that, because I'm pushing them out of my neighborhood. I'm not having it. At the end of the day, I'm just not having it. So they are going to other districts wanting to hang out. Now before, last but not least, our new library, which is part of Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor John legacy. One of the issues that we are having is parking. I drop off a little girl that lives over there. I can't even get a park, even though I'm not there to go to the library, but there are people that want to visit the library. They don't even bother to go, because they can't park. They don't want to go behind, because sometimes the day drinkers are hanging out back there. So, common council, we need to make it where there's available parking in front of the library, because the people that live in the building, they don't want to park in the garage, so they are parking overnight, all day, on the street. So we need parking for that library. That library has so much to offer our children, but there's no parking. If I had a child, I do not want to drag my child from across the street with mumos at, across that busy street. It's a safety hazard. So we need to get a handicap spot there, and also a couple designated spots for parking for the library. I don't know if that's something that you cannot do. I don't see why you can't do it, because you do everything else. So we need parking for people that are visiting that library, and the people that live in that, those apartment on 22nd Avenue, they need to use lots the side of the building. So I just found out that they have parking on the side of the building, but they choose not to go over there.
Mamie, 30 seconds.
Oh, okay. Because we have problems with some of the day drinkers hanging out over there. Thank you.
Kelly Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Kelly Armstrong. I am the president of the Kenosha Innovation Neighborhood. And as we are on the docket later on your agenda, just wanted to take this moment to thank you for your continued support, and even more importantly, to thank you for your future forward vision for this area, and all of our neighborhoods that are connected. And for a municipality and its leadership to have a vision like you do for the Kenosha Innovation Neighborhood is a differentiator, and it really puts you ahead of any competition, and you should know that. And I think it's phenomenal. I'm honored to be serving in this role and working with you. And we're really excited to see the Kenosha Innovation Center come online this year, and we'll be happy to have you all out at different times, obviously, for a hard hat tour, as that comes online, or before it comes online, so you can see that. Additionally, wanted to just let you know a couple of things. One, we are doing a, a future, a Bike to the Future event on May 2nd, so hopefully you'll get that information coming out here this week. We're partnering with Harborside for the Better Community Day, Better World Day, sorry. So we'll have students kind of leading the charge with that, and we'll be biking from Civic Park on 56 to the brand-new 56, going through the KIN development. So we'll be biking from 56 to 28th. And I'm sure all of you are entrenched in the history of Kenosha, but I, coming in from somewhere else, have had to learn it. And a really exciting fact is that it actually started as a bicycle manufacturing plant. So we are going to start with the bicycles to kind of open that bike path that's on 56, and just kind of get people excited about this, this whole space, and 107 acres coming alive this year, which is very exciting. And of course, I've already with the students at Lakeview Tech Academy in January. Additionally, we are working on a really cool, one of our first events around entrepreneurship, which is also one of our charges, and that will be in November. November 12th, we'll be hosting a Pitch Perfect event. It's actually a tri-county collaborative, and we will be hosting it in the brand-new Kenosha Innovation Center. And anyone that has a business idea, it could be Napkin Stage, Idea Stage, a little further along stage, can, is invited to participate, to pitch their idea. We'll have a panel of judges. We'll have a panel of judges and cash prizes for those that are selected to win. So it's a great way to really kick off the Kenosha Innovation Center. And I encourage you to put that date on your calendar as well. So I won't take up any more of your time, but just appreciate your support. Want to take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for the vision and thank you for driving forward.
Okay, please continue.
B Communications, Petitions, Reports of Departments. B1, Approval of the Following Applications. A, 29 Operators Licenses. B, Two Temporary Class B Beer and Our Class B Wine Licenses. C, 19 Amusement and Recreation Supervisors Licenses.
Gentleman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to concur with the recommendation of license permit.
Move in second to concur with the recommendation. Just B1.
Move to approve. Thank you.
Should there be one?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It's been moved in second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
B2, Max Marketing Inc., Appeal for Special Event Invoice Adjustment. Finance recommended to approve, to deny, five to zero.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Move to concur with the Finance Committee Recommendation to Deny B2.
That's seconded by, correct? Oh, that's fine. It's all right. It's been moved in seconded to, to concur with the Finance Committee Recommendation to Deny. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye? Well, all those in favor vote aye? This is to deny. Motion is to concur, which is to deny. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
B3, Appointment by Kirk Redmond Jr., City Assessor, of Kirk Redmond Jr. to the City of Kenosha Board of Assessors.
Motion? Been moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
B4, Conditional Use Permit for a 279,872 square foot distribution facility located at 6222 77th Avenue.
Gentleman from the 3rd.
Yes, move to approve with the revised conditions for approval.
Moving in second to approve the conditions. At this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on item B4? Please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is approval of item B4. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
C, Recommendations from the Committee on Licenses and Permits. C1, Applications for New Operators Licenses. A, Richard Boyle, 70. B, Latasha Thornton, 40.
Gentleman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make the recommendation to concur, I make the recommendation to concur for items C1 through C6 after being read in any necessary public hearings.
Moving in second to concur, C1 through C6.
C2, Application of Priscilla Goldston for a New Operator's License. C3, Application of Kyle Johnson for a New Operator's License. C4, Application of PK Manny Liquor Corp. for a new Class A Beer, Class A Liquor License located at 2121 45th Street. Upon surrender of a Class A Beer, Class A Liquor License from Mr. Dollar Distributing LLC to be effective April 8th, 2025, with no adverse recommendations from the Police Department. C5, Renewal Applications for Scrap Salvage Dealer Licenses with no adverse recommendations from the Police Department. A, Janz Auto Sales Inc., 3405 Washington Road. B, Janz Yard 4 Automotive Inc., 2500 Washington Road. C, Schneider's Auto Sales and Parts Inc., 8521 Sheridan Road. C6, Renewal Applications of PRC Inc. located at 6425 27th Avenue with no adverse recommendations from the Police Department. A, Recycling Center Activity License. B, Scrap Salvage Collector's License.
Okay, at this time, open up to a hearing. Anyone here to speak on item C1 through C6? Please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here to speak on C1 through C6? Need your name and address for the record, please.
C4, Promender Corp., 9758 South Rustic Place, Oak Creek, Wisconsin. And I had applied for the Class A Liquor License and I would like you guys to grant.
You, C4, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or anything that you have?
If you guys have any questions, I'm willing to answer.
Questions from the council. We'll finish the hearing and then we'll see if there are any.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else on C1 through C6?
Priscilla Goldston. For, my address is 1403 30th Avenue, Kenosha, Wisconsin. C2, just here for any questions that you have.
Okay. Like I said, there may be some from the council once we finish the hearing. If there are, we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else on C1 through C6?
Hello. Hi, Latasha Thornton. 1325 South White Oak Drive in Waukegan, Illinois. I had applied for a bartender license and they were going for review for today. Forty points was placed on my application. However, this morning, the case was actually dismissed from the judge. And I'm just asking if those points could be removed.
Okay. There, there may be some comments from the, from the committee on that as we finish the hearing out. If there are, we'll, we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Anyone else on C1 through C6? Anyone else? Anyone else seeing none? Closing here. Gentleman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to draw the council's attention to C4. And this was approved subject to an amended statement of economic interest. And I just wanted to tell the council what the process was and why we're at this point. If you take a look at their economic interest, which I guess I think is page 31 of our backup, we wanted to ensure that, that $60,000 was going to be their best guest estimate. Now, what we've seen here is they just rebalanced those numbers or rechanged those numbers. And the reason this is important is because with, we can look at this in a year of time. And if they don't meet 70% of what they stated, then we can take action against the license. So we were asking the applicant to make sure that what number is put in front of us is the number that is their best guest estimate. Their bottom line states $60,000. So while they did change A, B, and C, D still remains the same. They will be held to make 70% of that $60,000 when we review their license a year from now. So that's what that, that's what that note was for. And I just wanted to share that with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, any comments on the, the last comment about?
I would defer to the city attorney. However, I do believe that because it's dismissed, it doesn't stop the points from being assessed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Lady from the 12th.
I would like to have put on record that my vote is a no for C4.
Okay. We will make that note. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is concurrence in C1 through C6. And the lady from the 12th will be voting no on C4. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
C7, Findings of Fact, Conclusions of Law and Recommendations in the Matter of the Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License for ALK Inc. Located at 2615 60th Street.
Gentleman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and recommendation in this matter.
Moving in second to approve the findings of fact. Just to make sure, there is no, there is no hearing on this, correct, Mr. Knight? Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, it's just the way it's, okay. That was, it was written weird down there. Okay. At this time, we'll open up to a hearing. Anyone here to speak on item C7? Anyone here to speak? Anyone? Anyone here to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hello, Angela Preston, 6405 96th Avenue. Thank you for having this on your agenda today. I brought this to Common Council and license and permit a while ago due to the fact that shenanigans sold my daughter's, as a minor, some alcohol, which resulted in her having a bad reaction, we'll just say. I just wanted to say thank you for assessing the points and taking the time. I hope that if anything like this happens in the future, that it doesn't take a common citizen to bring it to the attention because I did come to everyone here and asked for help directly. And I appreciate that there was a way out for me to figure that out because I wasn't getting the help. I appreciate license and permit for taking a hard look at this after it was presented to them and doing the right thing. Kids are kids. Kids' brains are still growing. That's why we call them kids. Mine included. I think I'm still learning too today and I'm almost 40. So I just wanted to say that we have to be more diligent when it comes to things being grandfathered in because it's hard to change. It's hard to go back from that. My grandfather, if he caught me getting drunk at, under the age of 21, he would not be okay with it. So when people are being grandfathered in and there's only one person that can do it, I think that they should be held to a different standard. The only people that can change it are you guys. And this gentleman has three other businesses that are not being held to the same standard as the one that was listed today. I will be advocating that the rules apply across the board. There's no way to identify a child through a drive-through. Clearly. I hope that the retraining goes well. I hope that this doesn't happen again. But if the rules are not applied across the board to all the businesses and changed, I don't think we can do better collectively as a community. Because as we know, if you shenan once, you'll shenan again. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on item C7?
Greg Zarnicki, 5604 48th Avenue. I am the agent and owner of all the shenanigans locations that are mentioned in everything. Just wanted to give an update for the council. Before the License and Permit Committee meeting two weeks ago, all the retraining for those employees that were specified was completed. At that time, we did order scanners for every location, not just the one that's mentioned. So we will be receiving those on Wednesday this week for an installation of Thursday for the first location. After the first location, it's been satisfactorily, just made sure that everything works correctly. The last four will be ordered so that we're in compliance for everywhere, not just one location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on item C7? Anyone else? Anyone else seeing none? Close the hearing. Gentleman from the 5th.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I feel bad that your daughter had a reaction. And I also feel that they should be punished for what they did. I have no problem with that. I feel 70 demerits points is very, is a lot. To the chair, to the city attorney, has this bar ever been cited before? To your knowledge? For selling illegal to minors?
I don't know the last time that it was. I know that the particular location has had action related to it, but that would have been when I was doing licensing permitting, probably more than 10 years ago would be my guess. I'd have to do a historical review to tell you exactly when.
Have we ever given 70 demerits points for selling to a minor before to an establishment?
No. Selling to a minor has demerits points associated with it. I believe these are discretionary demerits points related to other parts of the operation, including the videotaping and those sorts of things.
There's where my point is. We're giving them 70 demerits points and we've never done it before. So I have a problem with that. Again, they need to be punished. I have no problem with that. What they did wasn't right. But I think it's a little severe and a little harsh. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knight, can you just clarify your, your last statement? It was not for necessarily underage, but other, other issues that were brought up during the hearing and license permit?
I think that there was some discussion about videotaping and, and how long they were keeping videos, as well as the fact that there was an underage person involved in the circumstances that that brought this all about. So I, I think there was more than just an underage sale related to the hearing and the presentation at the hearing.
Thank you, sir. Gentleman from the 10th.
Thank you. This is a very unique situation in the fact that the, I'm going to make sure I get the right terminologies here. The complainant brought this forward, but the complainant did not make her case. I think that's very important to understand that during the testimony, the licensee admitted to quite a few things that they themselves said they could do better. So this is a very interesting thing in the fact that the person bringing the complaint did not fulfill or did not convince the License and Permit Committee of the complaint that she was bringing forth. But the licensee, by his own testimony, and I asked the record to be included here, and you can read that record on your own in the support. As far as it's never happening before, we could have dismissed it because the complainant did not meet her case. However, we could not ignore the testimony of the licensee. I think that you've heard tonight that they've taken corrective actions. We wanted to make sure that the scanners were in place. We wanted to make sure that employees will retake the responsible beverage serving training, which has happened. So I think this has been a good outcome. And I'll ask you to support the findings of facts, conclusions of law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, motion on the floor is concurrence with the findings of fact, license and permit. Any discussion? Sure. Roll call. An aye vote will be to support the findings of fact. No vote would not. Roll call, please.
Motion carries 15 to 1.
Okay, please continue.
F zoning, zoning ordinance is first reading. F1 zoning ordinance by the mayor to create subsection 18.02 NNNNN of the zoning ordinance to amend the Parkside South Neighborhood Plan as referenced in the Comprehensive Plan for the City of Kenosha 2035.
Move to send F1 and F2 on their way after being read?
F2 rezoning ordinance by the mayor to rezon the property at 1225th Avenue from A2 Agricultural Land Holding to RM1 Multiple Family Residential District.
Okay, motion on the floor is send F1 and F2 on their way. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I resolutions. I want resolution by the Committee on Finance to correct Resolution 31-25 by rescinding one special charge in the total amount of $280 assessed to the property at 4910 17th Avenue. Finance recommended to approve, five to zero.
Gentleman from the 13th.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to concur with the Licensing and Permit Committee, no, Finance Committee. Sorry, Brother Kennedy. The Finance Committee Recommendation to Rescind the $280.
Moving in seconded to concur with finance.
Yes.
At this time, we'll open up to a hearing. Anyone here to speak on item I1? Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrence on I1 to rescind. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. I two, resolution by the committee on public works to order the cost of public sidewalk and/or driveway approach construction and or replacement to be specially assessed to abiding property for project twenty-five dash ten forty-five, Twenty-Ninth Avenue resurfacing.
A gentleman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to concur with the findings of public works on I two, I three, I four, after being read, and any necessary hearings.
Please continue.
I three, resolution by the committee on public works, preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special, to levy assessments for sidewalks and/or driveway approaches for project twenty-four dash ten forty-four, Sixty-seventh Street resurfacing. I four, resolution by the committee on public works, preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy assessments for sidewalks and/or driveway approaches for project twenty-four dash ten forty-six, Thirty-eighth Avenue resurfacing.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrence on I two through I four. Any discussion? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, I two has a public hearing. At this time, we'll open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on item I two? Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Now, motion on the floor is concurrence of I two through I four. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. I five, initial resolution by the mayor authorizing the borrowing of thirty-five million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars to finance projects and tax incremental districts and capital improvement projects, providing for the issuance of general obligation promissory notes therefore, and levying a tax in connection therewith. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
Move to concur with the finance committee recommendations on I five and I six after being read?
I six, initial resolution by the mayor authorizing the borrowing of ten million five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to finance projects and tax incremental districts, providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation promissory notes therefore, and levying a tax in connection therewith. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrence on I five and I six. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. I seven, resolution by the mayor to transfer parcels from the city of Kenosha, Wisconsin to Torsten Builders and Properties LLC for the home Kenosha program. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
Move to concur with the finance committee recommendation to approve I seven and I eight after being read?
I eight, resolution by the mayor to transfer parcels from the city of Kenosha, Wisconsin to Rocketman Investments LLC, DBA New Gen Homes for the home Kenosha program. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrence of I seven and I eight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. J appointments, reappointments by the mayor. J one, reappointment of Alyssa Whitmore to the Kenosha Public Museum Board of Trustees to fill a term that begins May first, 2025, and expires April thirtieth, 2028.
Motion?
Move to approve J one through J three after being read?
J two, reappointment of Christine Vineger to the City Plan Commission to fill a term that begins May first, 2025, and expires April thirty, 2028. J three, appointment of Joseph Walagora to the Board of Review to fill a vacant term that will begin April sixteen, 2025, and expires on April fifteen, 2030.
Okay. Motion on the floor is approval of J one through J three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. L other contracts and agreements. L one, agreement for professional engineering services between the city of Kenosha, Wisconsin and Strand Associates, Inc. for one hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue and Fifty-Second Street design.
A gentleman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to concur with public works on L one.
Second.
Catch your vote, sir. Or your motion, I should say. Moving seconded to concur with the public works recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no.
Aldo Person Wilson. Motion carries sixteen to zero. L two, lease agreement between the city of Kenosha and Carthage College for Keela. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
Move to concur with the finance committee recommendation to approve L two and L three after being read?
L three, lease memorandum of lease hanger forty-one twenty-three, forty-one twenty-three, Ninety-first Avenue. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
Okay, motion on the floor is approve, L two and L three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. L four, agreement by and between the Commemorative Air Force, B twenty-nine, B twenty-four squadron, A five oh one nonprofit, and the city of Kenosha, Wisconsin and AVP Kenosha Aviation LLC.
A gentleman from the fifth.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve as recommended by Airport Commission. I'd like to bring Cory up to the podium so he can explain what this is all about for people who are not familiar.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Wait one second, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening. The Airpower History Tour is making its way to Kenosha July sixteenth through the twentieth. They'll be giving tours of the B twenty-nine that they bring with them, along with a T six, steerman, and a Beechcraft. There's tours every day on all aircraft, rides on the smaller aircraft every day, and Saturday and Sunday, there's rides on the B twenty-nine.
Thank you, sir. A gentleman from the fifth, do you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you, sir. If nobody's ever been down there to see these planes, I recommend going down and seeing them. These are warplanes from years ago, and they're in beautiful condition. I've been down there before. It's phenomenal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Motion on the floor is approval of item L four. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please. The B twenty-nine is almost over, is your?
Motion carries sixteen to zero. L five, master declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for Kenosha Innovation Neighborhood.
A gentleman from the fifteenth.
Mayor, make a motion to concur with the findings of public works on L five.
Moving second to approve or concur on item L five. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. L six, development agreement by and between the city of Kenosha, Wisconsin and Torsten Builders and Properties LLC. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
Yes. I move to concur with the finance committee recommendation to approve L six.
Moving second to concur on item L six. At this time? No. Motion on the floor is approval of item L six. Any discussion? A gentleman from the sixteenth.
Good evening. Yeah, this is part of the home Kenosha program. L six is ten lots for development for a single-family housing on Thirty-seventh Avenue. We have two developers, one on L six and one on L seven. This is part of the, part of the American dream for some people to own a house. So, this, this is a big step towards that. I guess they have some people already lined up. My understanding, they're beautiful, beautiful homes. The cap is like three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it'll be. I highly support both of these items, L six and L seven. It's a, be a big plus for the neighborhood. I'll also want to thank the U-Lin Corporation for giving us some seed money to do this, so. I recommend approval on both of these. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, motion on the floor is to, is to concur. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. L seven, development agreement by and between the city of Kenosha, Wisconsin and Rocketman Investments LLC, DBA New Gen Homes. Finance recommended to approve, but that motion failed two to three.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
What was the motion?
Motion failed, so what is it? Is there a recommendation then? It just goes with no recommendation? Mr. Knight?
I didn't, I didn't hear what she said.
Motion to approve failed two to three.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes. So, I.
Let me.
We didn't have a second.
Yeah. Let me get a, a more, a ruling here from Mr. Knight.
So, there is no positive recommendation with regard to the resolution? Just the resol?
Development agreement.
Development agreement, excuse me. The other one was the resolution. Correct. They did not take a second vote to turn it around the other direction, so it comes without a positive recommendation or a, the recommendation, the result of the request at the committee level was to approve, and that failed two to three. So, that's the information you have.
So, right now, we just need a motion to either approve or deny?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. A gentleman from the thirteenth, you still have the floor, sir? Or we've got some other lights around here if you. I can come back to you, sir, if that's, if you want.
Yes, please.
A gentleman from the fourteenth.
I just want to put it on record that I do support the home program. Even though I voted no in committee, I'm gonna change my vote and support the program.
Thank you, sir. I guess we do need a motion from someone here.
Make the motion to approve, Mr. Mayor?
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Discussion on the motion to approve. Seeing none. Motion on the floor is approval of item L seven. All those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. A gentleman from the thirteenth.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll be voting no, as I did in, in committee, but I know going forward, we will have a better understanding of what these projects are. And I do support the building of homes on these lots. It's good for Kenosha, it's good for, it's good for everyone. But I just couldn't vote yea on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to say, I appreciate all of your, I know you do support this program. You have been instrumental in helping bring this program forward. So, I do thank you for your support, and I think we'll have some conversations post this meeting here on, you know, potentially some amendments overall. But I can hope we can move this forward here tonight, and I do appreciate all of your support on the overall program. Anyone else? If not, motion on the floor is approval.
Aldo Person Harper. Motion carries fifteen to one. M recommendations from the committee on finance. M one dispersment, record number five, eight million one hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars eighty-six cents. Finance recommended to approve five to zero.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
I move to approve the finance committee recommendation on M one, which is to approve.
Moving second to concur on item M one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. N one, acceptance of project twenty-three dash ten twenty-nine, Twenty-second Avenue reconstruction, phase six, which has been satisfactorily completed by AW Oaks and Sun, Inc. The final amount of the contract is three million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars eleven cents.
A gentleman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to concur with the findings of public works on N one and N two.
N two, acceptance of project twenty-three dash fifteen seventy-five, Fire Station seven roof replacement, which has been satisfactorily completed by Dick's Roof Repair Service. The final amount of the contract is forty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrence. A gentleman from the seventh.
I'd like to have a stand.
On which item, sir?
N two, please.
Is there a conflict, sir?
Yes, relative.
Understood. But concurrence on N one?
Yes.
Or I vote on N one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Not, motion on the floor is concurrence on N one and N two, and the, which is to approve, and a gentleman from the seventh will abstain on N two.
Motion carries. P and such matters as are authorized by law or regular business. P one, claim of Linda S. Bieber. Finance recommended to concur with the recommendation of city attorney to approve the claim, five to zero.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
Move to concur with the finance committee recommendation as recommended by legal department.
Moving second to concur with finance on P one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries sixteen to zero. P two, claim of Snap-on Tools Company for excessive assessment pursuant to Wisconsin statute section seventy-four point thirty-seven. Finance recommended to concur with the recommendation of city attorney to disallow the excessive assessment claim, five to zero.
A gentleman from the thirteenth.
Thank you. I move to concur with the finance committee recommendations to disallow the claims as recommended by legal on item P two through P six after being read.
P three, claim of Walgreen Company for excessive assessment pursuant to Wisconsin statute section seventy-four point thirty-seven. And on P two through P six, the finance recommended to concur with the recommendation of the city attorney to disallow excessive assessment claims on all of these, five to zero. P four, claim of Walgreen Company for excessive assessment pursuant to Wisconsin statute section seventy-four point thirty-seven. P five, claim of Associated Wholesalers Grocers, Inc. for excessive assessment pursuant to Wisconsin statute section seventy-four point thirty-seven. P six, claim of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Apartments LLC for excessive assessment pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, section seventy-four point three seven.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrence on P two through P six. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will vote aye, those opposed, no.
Motion carries sixteen to zero.
Okay. Mayor's comments. First of all, again, to our good friend, gentleman from the second, a very happy birthday to you, sir. I know you couldn't think of any other better place than to spend it than right here with us, so we thank you for that. Also want to welcome all of those who are watching right now via our live stream. Thank you to our IT department, Mr. Guy Ton, a number of others for helping set this up. This is something I have wanted to do for quite a long time. And again, it continues our work on ensuring that we are as transparent and open and accessible to all of our citizens. This will make it much easier for them to view council meetings. But you. This will make it much easier for them to view council meetings, but you don't have to, they're all boring. But all of your committee, all the committee meetings, everything, it makes it much easier for folks to go and gain access to their local government. And I think that's extremely important for us to do, and I want to thank all the city staff who helped make that happen. Also, we had, I sent all, sent all of you an email this past weekend. We had the, as you know, we included in this year's budget, a new program, and that is the application of blood on all of our EMS units, becoming the first in the state to have all of our units equipped with this type of application. And while we, we had said when we went through the process, we hoped it would never be used, but if it did, we're glad that we have it. And then it took about a day, and we were already using it to save somebody's life. So first off, my hat's off to our fire department and EMS folks for all of their hard work and their training. You know, this is a new thing, and once again, I think Kenosha is continuing to lead the way, as we always have, on a number of different fronts, particularly on our EMS services, to continue to show that we are the best in the state of Wisconsin. I would anticipate that more communities will probably be mimicking what it is that we're doing, which, which at the end of the day is a good thing. But that shows the leadership that we have, not only in our fire administration, but also the men and women of Fire Department for all their hard work. And that work that, and I also want to thank all of you. You know, when we went through this budget, you know, this, this last year, you know, we were talking about a lot of different things, this was something new. And I want to thank all of you for your support on this, because again, you know, our job is to try to do what we can to improve the lives of our, our constituents, and if we are saving their lives, it's about as, about as good as you can get. And your support means a heck of a lot to me, it means a heck of a lot to the fire department, and I just want to thank all the council members for all of your support on this new program. And lastly, kudos to Michelle Nelson and the entire city clerk's office for another. For another outstanding election. And when I say outstanding, again, I'm not talking about, I don't care who wins or loses, unless I'm on the ballot. But for showing that, again, we run an extremely efficient, we run a very secure, we run a high-quality election. So hats off to all of the folks in Michelle, Michelle's team, including all the volunteers. We actually went out and talked to probably three-quarters of the poll, polling locations. She says I drive too fast, but I don't think so. And went out and talked to a number of the folks, and they were very happy, number one, about how efficient the process was, and how easy it was for people to exercise their, their right to vote. But also, they loved the stickers that they have, and it's something we're going to continue to do moving forward. We actually ran out, my wife was very upset because she got there late and didn't get one, but, so I got to figure that out, otherwise I'll get in trouble next time. We did not run out of ballots, thank you, lady from the fourth, and other places did, but it shows again that we were prepared. We knew what was, what was going to happen, we, we prepared for that, and we ran the most efficient election possible. And everyone who's watching this now should be very thankful, not just for the work that goes into it, but that the, the outcome is one that we can trust, and we're very appreciative of how that all, how that all plays out. So, that's a lot. With that, gentleman from the third.
Thank you, Your Honor. But basically, I was going to say very much the same thing about the city clerk's office and all of the hard-working people that worked on the, on the election. But I'd like to, I'd also like to make a comment to flip that a little bit. I'd also like to compliment all the people, because we had a rec, pretty much a record turnout for a spring election. I mean, it's been, it's been very high. But I'd like to compliment all the people who showed up to vote. And they made a difference, one way or the other, they made themselves heard. They showed up to vote, and they were pretty much patient. Sometimes you had to wait in line, especially when they decided to vote early at the municipal building. But everybody was patient, pretty much, and everybody was polite. And, and again, part of their politeness, I think, was reflection of the efficiency of the people they were dealing with. So, again, thank you, Michelle, and thank all the voters that expressed their opinion, because April 1st was not something, there, there were no fools on April 1st.
Gentleman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 21st, 2025, we're going to have a Transit Commission meeting. We will be discussing a resolution that has been written and sponsored by Commissioner Andrew Schmidt. Those who care about transit in our community, I would strongly suggest you come and listen to the discussion that we're having. One of the things that's covered in our ordinance for the Kenosha Transit Commission is we can operate the transit system up to 30 miles from the city of Kenosha. That's in the ordinance. We've seen significant growth in our community. Our neighboring, our two neighbors, three neighbors, Village of Pleasant Prairie, the Town of Summers, and the Town and the Village of Summers. We have a resolution, and I think you'll be seeing some discussion about this in the press. I believe Commissioner Schmidt has put the information up on his Facebook page. This is to initiate a discussion. We are not authorizing, we are not dictating, this is to initiate a discussion, and we invite anyone who cares about transit to the Transit Commission meeting, April 21st, 2025, and I believe we start at 5 o'clock. I want to speak in reference to I seven, I eight, L six, and L seven. And I want to give you three dates. This, and I will not go 25 hours, so just let you guys know that. The three dates I want to give you is May 18th, 2003, October 14th, 2004, November 8th, 2007. And then I want to give you some names. Alderman Everett C. Butler, Alderperson Julia Robinson, Aldis Gladney, Pastor John Hurst, Joe Kibisky, Tim Mahone, Mike Mackey, Bernardo, Bernardo Ozuna, Louis Regani, Tim Tompkins, Willie Mae Peebles, Thomas Wells, Yolanda Jackson Lewis, Ralph Tanuta, and Vince Zarletti. The first date I gave you was 5/18/2003. And that was the first meeting, informational kickoff meeting, excuse me, June, June 18th, excuse me, for the Wilson Development Plan. The people's names I gave you were those that were on the Wilson Neighborhood Planning Team. Tonight, your vote is a continued realization of a dream, of an idea that started in 2003. Just think about that. I have a little bit of chill just thinking about that. I've told you before, I'm not just the alderman for today. I have a charge, and that charge is to continue the work of those who came before me, and hopefully set up a foundation for those who go after me. So I want to thank you on behalf of those names that I gave you. I want to thank you on behalf of the people who attended those meetings in 2003 and saw a vision of what the Wilson Neighborhood could become. And we continue to serve that vision, and I thank you for that. And finally, in conclusion. Happy birthday, Mr. Alderman. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Alderman. Happy birthday to you.
Gentleman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, sir. I just want to take this opportunity to commend all the election workers here in Kenosha and everywhere else. This is a difficult job that is being made more difficult by threats of violence and claims of fraud. That does not, that does not exist. If it did, the, the people who make these crazy claims would come forward and, and produce evidence. We are fortunate here, there are local election workers. Both the volunteers and our city clerk employees are diligent and very capable. They take their jobs seriously, and claims of fraud are an insult to them. Whether we vote absentee or in person, we can be confident that our elections are safe and secure. Those who claim otherwise are being irresponsible and doing a disservice to their constituents. A very large percentage of Kenosha's, of Kenosians vote absentee. That is a good thing, because it is one of the most secure ways to vote. Nobody with any credibility has claimed otherwise. Those who claim there is fraud and waste just don't know how to lose with grace. A good example is a huge victory Susan Crawford got in the Wisconsin Supreme Court election. Her opponent showed class in how he handled his defeat. It's a shame local officials cannot do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And gentleman from the sixteenth.
Yeah, one last election talk. Madam Clerk, you did a hell of a good job with the elections I was here last Thursday and helped with the absentee stuff. Every question I had, the clerk's office had an instant answer for me, so I really appreciate it. The election, a hundred and million, $100 million was spent on the election. I could think of a lot better ways of spending $100 million for the, for the residents of, of the fine state of Wisconsin. You know, our veterans, our homeless, mental health, drug and alcohol treatments. That would go a lot farther than money spent on, on the, which, which judge particular party wanted to have, have elected. But that was their choice to spend their own money, but it seems like a waste of, a waste of money to me, so. But I want to thank the clerk's office once again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn to be in order on your, on your laptops. Moving second to adjourn, all is in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned, thank you, everybody.